What?
I'm formative.
Today?
Yeah, he was back.
You know, I look at this slide, it's very formative.
It sounds pretty good.
And that was just funny because I just.
You'll need one in about three days.
I know.
Charlie, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I thought that all.
Mayor, one thing that came to my attention.
There's talking about.
A couple of people had questions about the APSC.
There's no such thing as that.
Which is the APS agreements.
Mm-hmm.
And Sam's.
Very smart person.
My understanding is he may have a commitment of five or more.
Right.
So if we're really dragging on, you think it'd be.
Oh, yeah, we move it forward. Yeah, but you've got to watch.
Yep.
We're running out of time.
Thank you, sir.
Hello there, Dan.
Well, everything's important. Anything I have.
Are you in happy?
That's right.
Okay. That's about, that's about.
Okay. Well, now, you know.
Over the year.
Yep. God, the eighties were fun.
Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
Let her rip, Mayor.
We're ready.
Let her rip, Mayor.
Call a meeting to order. Thank you for being here today. Today is Tuesday, September the ninth, two thousand fourteen, and this is a regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Any introductions yet?
Yeah, I see a real famous radio talk show host out there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, his name is Don. Don Diefendorf.
Oh.
Only a stand-in, Councilman.
You know, you can rebut that if you want, Don. It's the.
Please, I wouldn't dare.
It's your privilege, yeah. That said, we're honored today to have Rabbi Adele Plotkin joining us for the invocation, and then Councilman Blair will do the pledge of allegiance.
I must compliment. I must compliment you all. I believe this is the first time I've been here where every single one of those seats is being occupied.
Nice. What did you mean by that?
Spiritually, or?
I will let you ponder that deep question at another time.
That'll go under advisement. Go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, Council members and staff, community members and friends, as we gather here today to address the business of governing our community, we recognize that the challenges we face are constantly changing. School has started up again for our youngsters. Mansu season will soon be over, and the topics to be addressed by this body are also in constant flux. We pray that you, our leaders, will be blessed with the wisdom and creativity to successfully address these ever-changing challenges, ever mindful to protect with compassion the people you serve and the environment we all live in. May you manage the resources we have available to us for the best benefit of all while continuing to seek out additional resources, as you have in the past, such as for medical needs, for water, for prevention of violence, for victims' assistance, and so forth. At the same time, may we all give thanks to those who have enabled us all to live our lives as safely as possible, even as you do today in proclaiming a Thank a Police Officer Day. In affirmation of these fervent prayers, let each of us now agree, so may it be.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with a reason and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Kirkendall.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Kuknio.
Here.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Nothing good from the order? Okay. Today, we have one proclamation, and this proclamation was brought to us by Councilwoman Wilcox, and so I will turn it to you. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Mayor. Erica, would you like to come up here and join us? First of all, I'd like to introduce Erica Mesa, who is the wife of one of our police officers, and I think you all know Andy, Deputy Chief. By happenstance, I met Erica, and she told me about a project that she's working on in connection with a wider network, an organization called Wives Behind the Badge. And on September twentieth, this group is going to be donating gift bags to all the police officers as just a way of saying thank you on behalf of the community. And the council will be, excuse me, proclaiming September twentieth as Thank a Police Officer Day in Prescott, as it's recognized all over the country. So I'd like to read this proclamation on behalf of the mayor. Whereas the citizens of the city of Prescott appreciate the service and sacrifices made by our city police officers who risked their lives to keep our community safe from harm, who put themselves in the line of danger to protect us, who endure working conditions in all kinds of weather and emergencies, and who are often the first to provide aid to those in need of help, including the elderly, mentally ill, and homeless. And whereas a police officer must successfully complete intense physical and academic training in order to take the oath of office, to uphold and enforce our laws, and to fulfill the responsibilities of the position with pride, integrity, and honor. And whereas police officers are members of our community who are exceptionally committed to helping others, to preventing and responding to crimes, to assisting in medical emergencies, and to educating youth and community groups about safety issues. And whereas police officers are crucial to the economic vitality of our community by serving as ambassadors of Prescott, assisting residents as well as tourists, maintaining order, keeping Prescott safe and secure, identifying risks and taking steps to reduce those risks. And whereas National Thank a Police Officer Day is recognized in cities throughout the nation as a special day each year for showing community appreciation of our law enforcement officers. And whereas the Arizona Auxiliary of Wives Behind the Badge is an organization of law enforcement wives who celebrate National Thank a Police Officer Day throughout Arizona by assembling gift bags of healthy snacks for police officers. Now, therefore, I, Marlon D. Kirkendall, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September twentieth, two thousand fourteen, as Prescott Thank a Police Officer Day, and ask our citizens to stop and thank a police officer in person, or by sending a thank-you note to the Prescott Police Station, or by participating in the Wives Behind the Badge Gift Bag Project through the Prescott Chamber of Commerce. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Prescott to be affixed on this ninth day of September, two thousand fourteen. And I'd like to give this to Erica. Erica, would you like to say anything?
Going up in the station, and we're also going to provide meals for all the fine men and women the entire day long, so we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwomen. On behalf of all the Prescott police officers, you know, who are out there working twenty-four seven, providing public safety services, I want to thank the mayor and all the council members, and especially Erica, for promoting this cause. So thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by our Fire Chief, Chief Light.
Good afternoon. Is it on? There we go. Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protam, council members. I'm honored this afternoon to bring up Conrad Jackson. Recently, you've probably seen in the local paper, The Daily Courier, a feature article concerning the book that he developed over the course of about, probably, four or five years of effort. We feel that it's a very professional document. And with that, we've taken this opportunity to share a copy of that with each one of you, and then give Conrad an opportunity to talk about the project briefly.
Thanks, man.
Hi. Most people here are probably familiar with Arcadia Books, because we do have such a rich history in the community. A lot of folks come here and do projects. We've got Williamson Valley, we've got actual Prescott, Skull Valley. Arcadia is a fairly well-known product for. Can I borrow that for a second? Most of you have product recognition. Arcadia does all their books very, they're pretty much the same format, so there is that product recognition. And they came to me almost two years ago and said, would you be interested in doing this for us? And me personally, having such a deep history in Prescott myself, I jumped on the opportunity. It took almost two years to do. Wrapped it up just this last spring, when I was scary to hit that final submit button when I hit the final draft of the final draft of the final draft. But I was going to draw your attention to a couple of things that were in the book. Just for those in the audience, it's eight chapters, and it does cover our history all the way back from our establishment with Morris Goldwater, all the way actually up to current events up until and unfortunately, including the loss of the hotshots. Arcadia was actually very nice about that. They called me up when that happened and said, do we need to push your deadlines back? We realize you've got something else you need to deal with on your plate. So they were really good people to work with. But I was going to draw your attention to page sixty-eight, which was the first and hopefully last Prescott fire apparatus to be destroyed in a fire. It's a hose cart from the nineteen hundred fire folks. And then in page seventy-four, we have a picture of Howie Hall being burnt down intentionally by firefighters as training. For those of you who aren't familiar, Howie Hall stood right where we're sitting right now. It was actually our fire station from nineteen oh six up till nineteen fifty-six, when we built the new facility over on Goodwin. City Council at the time didn't want to pay seven hundred dollars to have the building demolished, so the chief suggested maybe we burned it down and use it for training purposes, and city council agreed. And then on page eighty-two, we have Councilman Blair's house on fire when he donated it for firefighter training, which we were much appreciative for. So I hope you enjoy the book. It'll show you that the things you face today are the same things councils have faced in the past, as far as, say, other entities coming in and influencing and dictating what we do on the department. You'll see there's a lot of influence from insurance underwriting, et cetera, as far as more manning or more stations, et cetera, over the years. So what you're facing is the same thing the previous councils have faced. So I hope you enjoy it, and I appreciate your time.
Conrad, a quick question. Not having had a chance to read it yet.
Yeah.
Did you mention that, I think it was seventy-four, we bought the new snorkel?
Oh, it's snorkel.
The chartreuse one?
Yes. The snorkel's in there.
And it wouldn't fit in the fire station?
Yep, and we, yep, it's actually mentioned in there that, yeah, we had to go in and blow out the top of the bay at the end of the bay. I mean, going back even further, when we bought the first wagon for the horses, the first wagon was too big, too. It wouldn't go up the hills, the horses couldn't pull it, so we had to go back and buy a smaller wagon.
Very good. I remember that. Thank you. Thank you very much, on behalf of the entire council, and somebody may have a word to say, but, you know, the number-one fire department in state, it's appropriate that there be the history. So thank you very much. Yeah. Anybody else?
Mayor, just Conrad, congratulations on completing this, and I look forward to reading it, and thanks for signing it, too.
You know, Mayor, he was talking about how, you know, we're facing some of the same problems, and I dove into the archives here and was looking at some of the books from city council minutes back in eighteen something or other, and it was the second hose cart that was bought for the city of Prescott, and it was Goldwater that bought it. And he was arguing he'd buy it, but he had to have the city council pay for the shipping. So, you know, those arguments still go on all the time. You're right.
Thank you for the memories, Conrad. Looking through the book, I see some faces that I'm very fond of and some that we no longer have, but thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, let's move along. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, we need a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items one A through one C.
Second. Motion made in second. Now let's vote, please. Okay.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, moving along to the regular agenda, item A.
Item two A, approval of a professional services agreement with Seagull Waters Consulting to complete a classification and compensation study in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars, City Contract Number two zero one five dash zero two seven, various funds.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protam, council. Sorry. Okay, that's better. Okay, good afternoon, everyone.
We won't say anything if you want.
Oh, this, okay. All right. Thanks, Mark. Okay. Today, I'm going to be presenting to you information regarding the employee compensation and classification study, budgeted for in FY fifteen this fiscal year. I'm going to do a little overview of the study, including the reasons for the study, some of the methodology and timeframe involved, and the presumed outcomes and recommendations. Why the city needs a classification and compensation study? The city's core business is to provide public services and amenities. Those services are done by personnel. Personnel are the most important resource necessary to provide the quality services city residents enjoy and want to see continued. The last study was conducted in two thousand one with interim reviews by Human Resources until two thousand seven, when the economy took a downturn. All the cities in Arizona, as well as the nation, were in the same predicament. Markets weren't, the pay ranges weren't moving. Nobody was giving increases, so we didn't keep up on the market evaluations. Let's see, I'll go ahead. Oh. In two thousand one, the study cost about a hundred twenty thousand dollars. Where, the budget was for eighty thousand this year, and that reflects the city's HR Department participation in assisting, in participating and assisting the consultant with the, with the study. In other words, we're helping them with benchmarks, job descriptions, helping them target areas we already know are issues as far as turnover and compensation issues. Another point as to why the city needs a comp study, to evaluate how competitive the city is with pay and benefits for employees. Also, to determine what benefits are most important to employees within the context of overall compensation. And by context of overall compensation, we're talking about health benefits, paid time off, continuing education and training, that's all part of a compensation package, it's just not wage per hour. The city is experiencing higher turnover and having difficulty in retaining valuable employees. Our turnover, I did some calculations, started in July of this year, our turnover is hovering around seventeen percent. It's usually about eight to nine.
Are you of the nature to want us to ask questions as we proceed, or you want to wait till the end of your presentation?
If you'd like to.
Yeah. At some point, have you done an evaluation on what it costs the taxpayers to train certain classifications of personnel?
No. I can give you statistics from what I read nationally, and usually figure about forty percent of an employee's wage is training. So if we add that on top of benefits, paid time off, that type of thing, and then we lose that employee, we've just thrown away forty percent of what that employee was being paid, basically, in compensation.
Thank you. I think it's important, as we go forward with these type of products that we're bringing before the taxpayers, who ultimately we all serve, that they understand why we're spending eighty thousand dollars. And I'm very concerned over training. We've got a lot of good people trained in this community, and we need to make sure that those people are providing the services that evolution itself has created for our community within the free market. But make sure we're delivering the right services, but we haven't trained a bunch of people to send them off to do that job somewhere else, but to stay here and help the citizens here.
Charlie, you have a question?
Mayor, I'll reserve it for right now. Thanks.
You say not now?
I'm good for now.
Okay.
Okay. Another reason for this study, to redesign pay plans oriented to providing careers, not simply jobs. A job is when somebody comes in and they leave after we've trained them after two years, for whatever reasons. We'd like to get back to providing careers, so an employee can come in and look at a progressive pay plan, if they excel, if they get training, if they aspire to different types of jobs. They can look at a career plan at the city in hopes that they can progress and stay in the community and stay at the city. Another reason is to enable identification of longer-term personnel funding needs that must be met to enable restoration of careers. Again, the same, same reason. The next, the next slide is definitions of what we use in a class and comp study. Classification, when we're using that term, it means job duties and responsibilities associated with a pay grade and competitive salary ranges. Compensation, total amount of monetary and non-monetary pay. Again, the non-monetary is health insurance and paid time off, all that goes into assisting that, that employee in their jobs and hopefully as an incentive to stay in their jobs. Non-monetary pay provided to an employee by employer in return for work performed. Benchmark, a summary of a position described to be compared or assessed with other organizations, also used as a standard among like positions within the city of Prescott organizational structure. What can the city expect from a class and comp study? The study is a common practice that should be seen much like a preventative health checkup for the city's comp system, which may bring forward the symptoms of the present compensation deficiencies as outdated and uncompetitive. Those are reasonable expectations. When you don't have a comp study for thirteen years, those are reasonable expectations that there are deficiencies and outdated competitive pay ranges. Studies like these are considered a standard process that organizations undergo in order to assess pay against market. During a compensation study, the following may occur. Pay grades, structure may change or be adjusted. Individual pay may stay the same or be adjusted if below the appropriate market level. And if an employee's job is found to be above the market, the city is committed to maintaining the employee's current salary level. The next.
Sorry, Mayor, can we hit on the second bullet point? An individual may stay the same or be adjusted, and I'll probably repeat myself two or three times today, but one of the expectations that I have is that this study will give us a roadmap of where we need to get to in our compensation, but I don't want anybody to have the idea that we're going to get the study that says, oh, this person should be paid seventeen percent more or three percent more, and tomorrow that's going to happen. But it gives us a roadmap of how we're going to get to where we need to be so that we can plan.
Yes, Councilmen, that's exactly right. We have no, like you say, roadmap right now. We have no idea where we are in the market. Prescott traditionally has been maybe the preferred employer in the, in the quad cities. We don't know if that's still the case or not. We're losing people, and it's not only for compensation, there are personal reasons, too. But knowing where we are with compensation and benefits will certainly help us try to retain employees. The next slide, this slide is the project timeline. If council approves the contract, we're prepared to start the study immediately and conclude in early March, about the time the budget is, we're working on the budget, so we can take a look at what we need to do or where we want to start in trying to adjust market, market increases for the FY sixteen. There'll be different phases of the project. The first phase, first and second phase, HR will be working very closely with the consultants in getting them started. It's the project initiation, employee focus groups, and confirmation of the city's comp philosophy. Initial onsite meetings with Human Resources, confirming the goals and objectives of the study, discuss and confirm the city's compensation philosophy, gain understanding of strengths and weaknesses of the current system, finalize the timeline and specific dates for deliverables, identify data and information needed to support the project, survey and meet with employee focus groups to understand what benefits are most important to them. When we talk about the city's compensation philosophy, I found our compensation policy that's dated December twentieth of oh five, and I'd like to read it to you, because it pretty much states why we're doing this right now. It's a council directive, and it says, "It is the policy of the city of Prescott to pay its employees at prevailing wages paid for similar occupations in selected Arizona public sector organizations. The purpose of this plan is to attract, retain, and motivate employees through financial compensation commensurate with the employee's performance, responsibility, and contribution toward the city's goals. An affordable, market-oriented pay system that keeps city pay ranges externally competitive while preserving internal equity will be maintained through periodic review and adjustment." So that says it right there. That's, that's why we're here asking for this study.
Okay. Mayor, could I jump, jump in for just a minute?
Sure.
And Craig, this that you, earlier in the day, Jim and I was having some conversation about this, and in the ICMA study, we looked at generally performance and other things, and we didn't touch the wage, the wage factor at all. In this study, we're only talking about wages and not talking about organization or performance. Do we need to expand on this at all to go a little deeper into some of the, some of the areas? And something that has been hanging on me of the couple of weeks is that in Scottsdale, a couple of their employees were, three actually, was down in a sewer manhole doing some work. And normally, those are jobs that we don't think much about, but one was able to get out and two deceased because of the, the gas. Are we, should we be looking at some other things within the structure of our, of our employees along with this? And I'm sure at some point in time, the police and fire chiefs will be talking to you about compensation for their people. Or will that be a part also of this comparing to like cities and circum, similar circumstances? And Jim, jump in here if there's, if there's anything you want to get.
Thank you, Mayor. Here again, the concern is, you know, when we talk about public safety, and I understand frontline personnel, whether it be the fire department or the police department, go to work every day not knowing if they're coming home. But I also understand that people in today's world, as evolution has brought forward and market case has brought forward, we have a lot of people that are out there dealing with toxic chemicals, whether they're at the waste treatment plant, whether they're picking up garbage, just simple things where there's a lot of chemical exposure, and we are concerned with the personnel that are subject to this on a daily basis. I mean, they go to work hopefully for twenty, twenty-five years on behalf of the taxpayer, too, and they're being subjected to have an inhale and be exposed to, et cetera. So we're concerned over some of this issue.
Well, I guess the way I would respond is that firstly, the classification and compensation study will address all five hundred city employees. Those five hundred.
Those 500 city employees fall into job families. For example, two job families are the firefighting family, excuse me, and police officers. Another job family is, let's say wastewater treatment plant operators or wastewater division personnel who do dawn or put on the protective gear, personal protective gear, and follows strict protocols and use precautions to go in confined spaces, for example. So each of those employees has a position description. The question then becomes, does the position description adequately describe the nature of the work, including potential hazards? And usually they do because the job descriptions have been evolved and refined over considerable period of time. So I believe that the employees understand the nature of the work, the employer understands the nature of the work, then it is a matter of, through this study, looking at the market for employees with certain experience and so forth who are performing that work, which is the purpose of this particular project. So I believe it is being addressed. Now, if there was something that came to light operationally that nobody was aware of, some kind of new hazard or something like that, which was not reflected, something that hypothetically might have been described in the ICMA operations analysis, and that's exactly what those studies were, operational analysis, then we would have something changed, we would adjust job description, we would look for compensation levels because, you know, we're not unique around the country, the same hazards are there and so forth. But I believe that we are covered, or we have covered, and we are going to cover all of the things that you have mentioned within the context of this particular study. And then, Mary, we'll get to it, but there is a subsequent phase, which then really gets into the nuts and bolts of the job descriptions and reviews those and brings those up to date as well to recognize any new factors which may have come to light.
Thank you for that response, Craig.
Greg, you have something?
I'll wait to the end, Mayor.
You okay? Okay.
Okay. Phase two will be the total compensation market analysis. We'll be developing a market study methodology using peer employers, surveys, and interviews, focus groups. We'll be identifying benchmarked jobs, identify comparable employers and other data sources, collect and analyze the market data, and prepare and deliver a report detailing the market results. Phase three is to develop recommendations. By designing a recommended or revised salary schedule, recommend placement of each job in the salary schedule, provide input information necessary for a longer-term pay plan formulation, again, career-driven, review and update periodic and ongoing compensation policies. So the consultant will give us kind of a guideline to move forward, something that we can review. For instance, every other year, maybe HR will be able to survey maybe a third of the jobs. So we keep current, so there's a rotating schedule of reviewing jobs. So we don't have to do this type of survey for another seven, eight years, something like that, assuming we're able to move ahead with some kind of market changes, pay changes. Phase four is to prepare the final report and present results. That'll include background and reasons for the study, objectives and goals for the project, the methodology we use to conduct the analysis, key findings and outcomes, and then the final Next slide is the approach. It's in a little different format, but it has a little more detail in as far as which each phase comprises. And then again, the outcomes will be, the assumed outcomes will be recommendations for competitive salary structure based on market findings, recommendations for correcting market positions of jobs and assistance, and again prioritizing areas that require immediate attention for FY '16, recommendations for best practices and updated policies to administer the compensation system, and understanding of how competitive the city is in its total comp offerings, again, including benefits. The next slide is a little bit about the consultant. You can take a look at that. Segal Waters has been working with HR and in the competitive public sector world for 70 years. In the last two years, they've done 12 Arizona studies alone, full, complete studies like we're doing. They're very competent. Council has been talking about doing one of these studies for a couple of years, so we've had a lot of time to research, consult with our colleagues in different cities, and Waters' name kept coming up as the preferred vendor. So we're requesting to piggyback off another city or another organization's contract to save time. Segal is privately owned, independent consultancy with offices in 22 North American cities. They have an office in Tempe. Their total focus is on human resource issues affecting local, county, state, and public authorities. Public sector clients, there's a list of those there that are just, they provided to us, but we have a longer list on the next page. And their consulting philosophy is to work closely with clients to develop customized approaches to project objectives. And like I said, on the next page, there's a list of their clients they've worked with in the recent past. Any questions?
Thanks, Mary, for your presentation. Thanks, Mayor. I just have a couple, three questions here. Why couldn't we do this in-house?
HR, human resources in a city are generalists. A city this size, we're generalists. We don't have the expertise to do a full-blown study like this. We'll be able to keep up on the maintenance, I would say, five to seven years, keep up on reviewing jobs as the recent future-
Right.
-goes. These people do this day in and day out. They actually looked at our job families and in 15 minutes, our consultant was looking at, this one needs attention, this one does, this one does, because they've done 12 other studies within the last two years. They can cut to the chase. It would take us-
Yeah, if you had to do it in-house-
A year, a year probably.
It would take a considerable amount of resources.
Let me also add, excuse me, Mary, Councilman, let me also add that I think that experience has shown, and in fact, experience in this county has shown, that it's better to have an independent third party do a project like this, just to make sure it is totally objective and independent, that there are no agendas. And, you know, within the last couple of years, I think we've seen examples of what happens. When that independence is missing, there is concern at best.
Okay, and thank you, Craig. I guess the last of my question then is how much backend support are we going to be required to give them on our end, like requesting records, the whole focus groups, is that going to be quite a bit?
We're going to do as much as we can. In the scope of work in your packets, it actually has a phase two, which if, depending on the recommendations, we may, I might come to you and ask for that next fiscal year. We don't know where this is all going to come out. But to get it down, I mean, that would typically be about $130,000.
I mean, we're not going to go, sometimes I get approached by firms that are going to help me, but then I find out I do 90% of the work so they can tell me all the work that I've just did for them. That's not the case here. We're not going to do the majority of the work, we're just assisting.
No, we can't do the majority of the work. We'll probably do about 30% of it. That's why the cost is $80,000 and not $130,000.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you. And Mary, to Craig's comment, I concur on the need for it to be a third party that's independent. I've heard some horror stories about it being done in-house in different communities and, you know, this is something that this council's been talking about quite a bit, and I think for the last two and a half years, we felt it's needed to be done as we're coming back out of the downturn in the economy, we're looking towards the future, and we need to start coming up with our plan as to how are we going to properly compensate our employees? How are we going to have the transparency for the public? So I think this is the right direction for us to go. I think it's going to have some value. We know that there are certain departments where we're challenged right now, and I hope that we can address that sooner rather than later. But when we look at this, I think it's going to give us that roadmap that we need, looking towards how do we get to the point where we meet our goals? And you read what our compensation policy is. At some point, if that can get circulated to the council, and let's make sure there's a consensus that that's the policy we want to continue to go with. Because I know if you read in the packet, there's some discussion about the consultant wanting to confirm what our compensation philosophy is. And so I think we, as a council, should make sure that we concur with what is the current policy.
Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And much like the ICMA study's been used so far, I hope the department heads kind of make this their own. I hope they're included. I saw you had some employee focus groups to really look at this. I hope we get them together to see how to really implement this, what should do the best good, and to look at the deeper issues like culture, educational opportunities, et cetera. And, you know, to the point of what people do in the city, I think we got to look at, everybody's kind of involved in the safety of the citizens. And I'm looking at Randy over here, make sure that the house doesn't fall down when the person moves into it, you know, the wastewater treatment guys, make sure that we don't have disease in this town from that, which has killed tons of people in the past. We got clear drinking water, you know, every job at this city is important. So it has to cover everybody, and I hope we talk with all the department heads, bring them together to, because maybe we need a culture change.
Well, and Councilman Kuk, you know, the department heads will be involved in reviewing the job descriptions too. When we're sending out our surveys, they'll have to confirm that, yes, this job has changed since last time we looked at it, or last time we hired someone. So they'll be involved.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Mary, thank you for publicly stating that our department heads will be involved in the process. One of the things we learned with the ICMA study is that people in New York and Philadelphia and what have you don't always know what's best for the people in Prescott, Arizona, and they made recommendations based on what may be typical for some communities of our demographic and age and size somewhere else, but sometimes we're dealing with other things. So I think it's really important that the folks we've invested in over the years have ownership in this project, not just be told, here's what you get today.
Yes, yes, Mayor Proton.
June, you or Steve have anything before we take this to the next level?
Well, thanks, Mayor. I'm just glad that we've reached this point and we're ready to make a decision on hiring a contractor, and let's get going.
Just one quick thing. Mary, you know, I was here when we did the last compensation study, and I was impressed in the fact that the consultant at the time, was it the same company? Do you recall?
No, I wasn't. I came in right at the end of the study, so I was instrumental in implementing the changes and recommendations, but I don't know who the consultant was.
I know that as times evolve, over a period of time of Prescott's employees, some of the jobs go away, some new jobs come in, some jobs are retitled. One that I can think of is our trails coordinator with Chris Hosking has been put in place since the last study, so I'm anxious to see how that is evaluated throughout the process in other communities, also anxious to see which ones will be dropped and new classifications and job descriptions being put into place. So thank you for bringing this forward, I think it's well needed.
Thank you, Councilman.
Final question, at least from me. When would you expect this to be in your hands completed, that we would get our first look at it?
Hopefully early March. I think it will be done, if not sooner, by then.
So we'll be moving well into our budget discussions and probably in those discussions, would we use any of this study as some of our basis?
Oh, absolutely. We're looking for a pretty busy March and April as it relates to this project.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, I did have one note along the lines of what you just asked. In the proposal, there is an expenditure for this group to come present to the council, and I do, normally, that's another one that I'll complain about because it's several thousand dollars, but I think it's important that they come and justify their findings and also explain their process to us. But certainly, I think because of the process that the staff's going with, we had asked to make sure that this is something we can start using next year in the budget.
Okay. Anyone else? We have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve city contract number 2015-027 with Segal Waters Consulting.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Let's go to item B.
Item 2B, adoption of 2012 International Building, Fire, and Wildland Urban Interface Codes and Local Amendments.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk about the adoption of the 2012 International Building, Fire, and Urban Wildland Interface Codes. I also have radio host and fire marshal, Don Devendorf here. As you know, this process has been going on for over two years. We've had over 20 public hearings. We have been working very closely with the YCCA, contractors, developers, basically anyone that will listen to us. We've been on the radio, done everything we can. We've taken these amendments and resolutions to the Advisory Appeals Board, joint session with Uniform Development Committee. All have given unanimous support to move forward with these ordinances and resolutions. And then, as you remember, on August 5th, we came to council and had a workshop. At this time, we're looking at adopting the resolutions. That would make the codes a public record, and then be coming back to you in two weeks on your September 23rd voting session to adopt the ordinances. All of the ordinances and resolutions are currently on our city website with a spotlight, so anyone can just click on that spotlight and it takes them to all the ordinances and resolutions. Also, by adopting the new codes, I'll be able to resubmit for ISO ratings to lower that back down to a reasonable area. So at this time, if you have any questions, we're both here to answer any questions you might have.
Charlie, you have it.
Mayor, thank you. Primarily, I just wanted to take a moment and thank both you, Randy and Don, for your efforts here, as well as YCCA and Sandy and all of the different groups that have been involved. We're finally there, and let's get this done. My thoughts on it.
Steve?
You mentioned ISO ratings. Would you explain to the public that's watching what that means and how important it is to the community?
ISO rating is basically what the insurance companies use to rate what they're going to charge. They basically take into consideration everything that's going to be their loss and how much it's going to cost them to insure every citizen, whether they're renting, buying in the community. We are currently at a two for residential and three for commercial. We just got audited and we got a letter back that we're taking the nines. Basically, it's zero, or it's one to 10, 10 being worst, one being best. We're going to be at a nine unless we adopt, the main issue was the adoption of the codes. By adopting the codes, we're going to be going back down. They told me between a three and a four, so it'd be probably three for residential, four for commercial. If we stayed at a nine, everyone's insurance rates could, they don't even know how high that would go. I mean, it's pretty substantial. So this is an important process, an important piece of that thing that affects every citizen and the city of Prescott.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to concur with Councilman Arnold, that while sitting through the processes for a number of years, as well as the last several intensified months, this whole process was well attended- well-attended, generally speaking, by contractors and individual builders and the chambers of commerce and things like this. And Councilman Blair, thank you for asking that one question, because I think it's important for the public to know that these codes, these proposed codes, have been examined and reexamined. And actually, it's relaxing a little bit of some of the issues of major concern in addressing some of the issues to be more, I don't want to use the word compliant, but more closely associated with what's going on in the rest of the county that's closest to Prescott. So I think that Randy, you and your crew did a wonderful job. Thank you, Don, with the fire.
I just had one comment for you, Randy and Don, that, for the record, this has not been overnight. And it was several months, if not a couple of years, of a process. And I've already received a couple of calls asking me, well, how come this, or how come that? And I said, you had plenty of time with an audience that was listening. And you guys did listen, you made some changes, you just didn't do a broad brush, you cherry-picked things that applied and did not. And I just say, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I was hoping Sandy would be here today. Had you had contact with her?
She has scheduling conflicts. She will be here for the 23rd.
Okay.
But at the council workshop, she did show her support and say that we went through the process.
Okay, well, we had asked you that question one time prior, and I wanted to reaffirm that. Counsel, these have to be individually?
No, Mayor, these, today, the council's asked simply to adopt the resolutions, making all of the code changes a public record. And then on the 23rd, council will be asked to actually adopt the ordinances, putting these changes into effect 30 days later. And then the publication will be just the ordinances by reference to the, and the changes, the code changes will all be available, three copies at the clerk's office, as well as online and other places, if the public wants to review it and comment.
My, I guess my other question is, can we do this in one resolution, one through 10?
Yes, you can do one resolution, or one motion to adopt all of the resolutions, as long as the resolutions are read, as long as the resolution numbers. Next time, when we do the ordinances, they'll have to be separately approved.
They'll have to be individually next time.
The ordinances, yes.
But one through 10?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, do we have a motion?
Mayor moved to approve the resolutions, presented items 1 through 10.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And just for the clerk's record, Mayor, just for the clerk's record, to make real clear, that's a resolution on the agenda, 1 through 10, with the respective resolution numbers that follow.
Does that need to be brought into the record? Or you're okay?
It's good.
Item 2C, Adoption of Resolution Number 4251-1460, Approving a Procedural Pre-Annexation Agreement, City Contract Number 2015-034. Adoption of Ordinance Number 4908-1446, Annexing 37.35 Acres of Residentially Zoned Land, Comprising of Five Existing Lots in Senator Heights Subdivision, And Establishing the Zoning as Single Family 33-35 SF-35, An Approval of Water Service Agreement, WSA 14-005, City Contract Number 2015-040. Annexation 14-001, Owners' Applicants are Bud Bashir's of Stone Creek Investments LLC and the Candoli Trust. Ordinance Number 4908-11446, An Ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, Extending and Increasing the Corporate Limits of the City of Prescott by Amending Approximately 37 Acres of Residentially Zoned Land Situated Along Senator Highway Into the City of Prescott and Assigning a Zoning Classification There Too.
Okay, so you've read the ordinance in full, and that will suffice there? Is that correct? Okay. Counsel.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I think you're very familiar with this annexation request. June 10th, public hearing, had conversation with respect to restricting the number of lots or parcels that would be able to obtain city water service without connecting into the city sewer system. And this is the last step, the council's consideration of the annexation ordinance, of annexation statutes, ARS 9-471. And the development agreement does have provisions for providing water meters, water to four of the five lots. Actually, lot number two, which is here, and perhaps you can see it in the overhead, has already developed a single family and currently has a water meter. But lots one, three, four, and five would also have the ability to tie into city water. There are also additional provisions in the pre-annexation procedural agreement, development agreement, that would require these five lots, the subject property parcels, to tie into city sewer in the event that this property is brought back through the platting process consistent with the land development code. And if and such that event were to occur, the subject parcels, the approximate 37 acres, the five lots, under consideration for annexation, would have to tie into sewer, as well as any additional future increases of density on the subject property. The annexation ordinance will assign, if adopted, will assign a single-family zoning designation of SF-35, which is the most comparable to the county's only, will not allow for an increase in density from the currently already approved Senator Heights subdivision plat. Would that make you aware that we have Bud Bashir as one of the property owners and his agent, Bill Feldmeyer here? Should you have any direct questions for them? And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
TV, you have a question?
Yeah, I suppose, as sitting on the planning commission for all the years that I did and being on council, this is something I'm glad to see finally come forward. And at the last meeting, Tom, we were pretty specific as a council that a process be followed. And I'm sure, based upon it showing up today, that that process has been followed?
That's correct.
And the pre-annexation agreement has been voluntarily inserted with the owner, and he agrees to that?
Yeah, we believe that the pre-annexation agreement really summarizes or captures the discussion that the council had at your June 10th meeting.
Okay, so he's all good with that?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I appreciate the fact that we've gone through that process. And also, the last thing I had on my mind is the fact that in zoning SF-35, is it any property SF-35 as well?
I believe that was rezoned to SF-12 at the time.
Okay, so it's down below, but that's pretty comparable.
That's correct.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Jim.
Number one, thank you, Mr. Bashir, for being willing to invest in the city. And thank you for giving up some of what you had the right to do in the county. I think this is a win-win, both for the city and for you. You get to be in the city of Prescott, and we don't have the exempt wells right next door to the city. Thank you very much.
Anyone else, Counsel? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mayor, can I ask a question before we go there? Do we do three separate?
We have two separate items.
Three separate ones. Three separate motions, Mayor.
Okay, three. And they're listed, ready for motion number one?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 4251-1460, Approving the Procedural Pre-Annexation Development Agreement, City Contract Number 2015-034.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Do we have a motion on number two?
Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance Number 4908-1446, Annexing 37.35 Acres of Residentially Zoned and Comprised of Five Existing Lots in Senator Heights Subdivision, As Described by Plat of Annexation, And Establishing the Zoning as Single Family 35 SF-35.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, now we can go to number three.
Mayor. Move to approve Water Service Agreement 14-005, City Contract Number 2015-040.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote please.
Passes unanimously.
You're welcome to stay the rest of the day. Okay, let's go to item D.
Item 2D, Approval of Amendment Number Two to City Contract Number 2013-044A2 with LA Consulting Incorporated for Field and Facilities Department Maintenance Management Services in an Amount Not to Exceed $77,070.
Good afternoon.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. LA Consulting has been providing maintenance management services to the city on an as-needed basis since 2004. In September of 2012, the city entered into a contract with LA Consulting for assessment and training services pertaining to a maintenance management systems presently deployed in the Public Works Department and also in the Street Maintenance Division. Excuse me. Earlier this year, in March of 2014, council approved Amendment One to the city contract with LA Consulting in an amount not to exceed $17,359. The scope of services was based on LA Consulting's recommendations from an assessment of the Utilities Operations Division. This item, Amendment Number Two to the contract, is for the Field and Facility Services Department. The scope of services under this amendment builds upon recommendations that LA Consulting provided to us during their Phase One assessment of our divisions during 2013. Under the existing contract, LA Consulting completed a Phase One assessment of the Facilities Management Division, the Fleet Services Division, and the Soloways Divisions. The assessment included a work history review and established work programs and defined methods and guidelines, enabling identification of opportunities for improvement. LA Consulting also reviewed the street maintenance operation and updated progress on their recommendations from a review they had done in 2004. And they also provided guidance and refresher training to the Street Maintenance Division. The scope of services under this requested amendment will build upon the recommendations provided by the Phase One assessment. The amendment will provide the expert supplementary services needed to improve upon the performance-based work program and budget, implement a facilities maintenance management system, configure software systems, revise activity lists and work units, define work methods and guidelines, develop equipment utilization rates, and provide training to our employees. Opportunities to streamline or eliminate unnecessary steps and work processes will also be identified and documented and presented for recommended improvements. The Field and Facility Services Department consists of 70 employees with an annual combined operating budget of approximately $17.7 million. Maintenance management systems for the divisions will provide instant access to asset histories, enabling better customer service and the ability to evaluate operations and make informed decisions. Project services, if this is approved, I expect to begin about October 1st of this year and last approximately six months. And there is funding available in the FY15 budget in each of the division's operating budgets. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine's not a question, but merely a statement, Stephanie, that this is a bargain. And I have a very, it's a very scaled-down version of this, but in the end, once everything is categorized, and especially in the equipment and facilities, and you'll be able to keep track of everything you put into that with, I don't know if this system, you can take a picture and it gets scanned to that particular, like that HVAC unit or something. And historically, you'll know how much you've dumped into it, if it's time to scrap it, or if it's under warranty, all that stuff. So it's invaluable.
If I might expand upon that, other council members will recall the presentation which was made by Public Works with their camera investigations, periodic camera investigations of the sewer system. And that is a standard activity of the type which is contemplated by this particular project, although this project is in field and facilities, not utilities. But you inventory the assets, you determine the conditions, you define what tasks you have to do to maintain your assets or infrastructure, you make up standard activities, crew sizes, equipment requirements, and so forth, and you have some familiarity with this. It is the only way to perform and manage maintenance in this world today.
It's got a lot of front-end burden, but once it's done, it's invaluable.
Yes, Councilman.
Are we going to work ourselves out of a job until somebody will push a button?
Hopefully not, Mayor. After we get all this information collected, someone still has to go do the work.
Then we'll have to learn to read a computer. Anyone else from the council? Comments from the public? Okay, need a motion?
Mayor, move to approve Amendment Number Two to City Contract Number 2013-044A2 with LA Consulting Incorporated for Maintenance Management Services in an amount not to exceed $77,070.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay.
Item 2E, Award of Contract for Professional Building Assessment Services to ISES Corporation Using Federal Contract Number GS-21F-0045W, Pricing in the Amount of $15,100, City Contract Number 2015-3033.
Mayor and Council, this item builds on that last item you just approved a little bit. Approval of this item will award a contract to the ISES Corporation to do professional building assessments for the fleet maintenance facility and also for the garage on granite parking structure. The fleet maintenance facility is almost eight years old, and the garage is actually more than nine years old already. Both facilities require detailed asset identification and preventive maintenance programming to ensure that each building and its critical service components are properly managed for their maximum life expectancy. The Facilities Management Division has begun documenting the city's building assets, the building infrastructures, and critical components throughout the facilities management module, pardon me. They've been documenting these items. We have a software system called Lucity, and the information is being captured into that system. And the building assessments that are being requested under this item, the information from those assessments will also be input into the software system so that we can better track the assets and their critical components. And each, under these assessments, each building and its critical components will be inventoried. They'll be programmed for maintenance, programmed for replacement when applicable. And all the assets will be, all the information on the assets will be recorded, and we're even going to be barcoding the equipment that are on the facility. So in time, we can buy handheld barcode readers, and we can just read the information on the The ISES Corporation's assessment report will provide detailed and accurate information for the two facilities, and the information will be put into our software system, which will provide an electronic record of the fitness of the two facilities, and it will allow for better maintenance and capital expenditure decisions. And funding of $15,100 is provided for in the FY15 budget. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Charlie. Mayor, thank you. Stephanie, I've read through the packet. I've researched the company quite a bit. And you commented that we've already got staff that are doing building evaluations?
We have our facilities people collecting data on our facilities, yes.
So in this situation, you've identified two facilities. We want to bring somebody from the outside in to take a look at it. What's the thought process that's leading up to, if we have staff that's doing it, why bring somebody else in?
Mayor and Council, this brings in the expert services. We need to go out and do a complete assessment of the facility. Right now, we have two facilities people that try to manage to stay up on the day-to-day operation of just maintaining the facilities we have. This brings in an outside source that can come in, do the physical assessment, give us a report, and also help us with our workload to some degree with the fact that they'll actually be barcoding the assets that are in the system. And then all the information that's gathered, we can put into our system. Right now, our facilities guys are running pretty ragged, just trying to keep up on the day-to-day things that are going on with the facilities.
And so that leads me up to a secondary question. Obviously, we're going to learn quite a bit from their process of observing this and seeing how it gets done. I know that for the longest time now, for the last several years, we've discussed at the budget level, that we don't quite know what our building maintenance shortcomings are across the city. And so I would be interested to see, A, the results of what these folks are able to find, what we're able to learn from it, and then if, looking at bringing a company like this in, or bringing in a temporary employee into the future to evaluate the rest of our buildings would make sense.
Mayor and Council, yes, well, we can do that. Another strategy of doing this is we're picking our two newest facilities, so that we can go ahead and get them assessed and get them on a cycle for replacement. And then the older facilities, we will try to catch up on those as time permits in the future upcoming. older facilities, we will try to catch up on those as time permits in the future upcoming budget periods.
And we're not anticipating using their asset management hosting into the future?
Not sure. The first year is included in this, and we're going to see how that works exactly, and if it is something that we want to continue, we will be budgeting for that and requesting those expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
Chris.
Mayor, the first part of my question was a lot of what Councilman Arnold did, but what kind of assets are we barcoding? What would be some examples of that?
Some examples of the items that will get barcodes are like the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units, and also critical components like plumbing components, the, any kind of equipment that are inside of the elevator shafts that we have in the garage and things like that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments from the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve award of city contract number 2015-033 for professional building assessment services to the ISES Corporation using federal contract number GS-21F-0045W, pricing in the amount of $15,100.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, vote please.
Chris.
Councilman Kukue?
Okay.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item F.
Mayor, I think I need to take a powder on this one.
Item 2F, award of bid and contract for inert debris processing services to Abusing Corporation in an amount not to exceed $300,000, city contract number 2015-032, Solid Waste Fund.
Mayor and council, the Solid Waste Division has been accepting inert debris at the city's transfer station for more than 20 years. The inert debris comes in from city departments and from other customers in the city of Prescott, and some cities and county people come also with inert debris to the transfer station. Inert debris consists of inorganic rock, concrete, block, brick, and dirt materials. The transfer station charges a lower fee for the inert material, and that is so that we can encourage customers to bring the material in separately, which makes for efficient recycling. If customers include the inert debris in their regular loads, it weighs more, it costs them more, and it's much harder for us to pull the material out and save having to haul it out to the landfill. Processing or recycling the inert material will result in a couple of usable products. One is a one-and-a-half-inch minus material that is usable for various applications. Some of those applications include things such as repairing erosion on the hall roads over at the SunDog landfill. It's used by water and wastewater divisions for shading trenches and filling utility cutouts. It's used by the Street Maintenance Division for shading roadway shoulders and repairing a few remaining dirt alleys that are located within the city. It also can be used on other city projects, such as the upcoming landfill cap repair project, and also at the wastewater treatment plant at the airport for the secondary access hall roads. We also get dirt out of the pile, which will also be going into the project over to repair the cap at the landfill. It is estimated that approximately $35,000 of expense is avoided annually by reusing the inert material that comes from recycling the debris. The inert debris, or excuse me, by recycling the inert debris, the division avoids paying transportation and disposal fees associated with it. By not hauling approximately 5,400 tons annually, the division avoids paying almost $295,000 in transportation and disposal fees. The material is stockpiled onsite until enough tonnage has been collected for processing, and currently, we have approximately 45,000 tons of material on hand to be processed. The division processed small quantities earlier in 2008 and 2011. The division would now like to process half of the material that we have in FY '15, and then process the remaining amount of the current material next fiscal year. The contract will be set up to annually process material into the future for the next three additional years for a total of five years. The division conducted a bid process to select a vendor for processing the inert material. The pre-bid was held on July 17th of 2014, and bids were opened August 21st of 2014. The division recommends award of the contract to Abusing Corporation as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. Their price was $4.38 a ton, and the division believes that that's a fair price, considering the last time we had processing done, it cost $7.41 a ton, and another time at $6 a ton. The initial term of the contract will be for two years, and it will allow for three additional one-year periods. The three additional one-year periods would be subjected to a CPI increase of not to exceed 3%. And I did a little schedule, keeping in mind, we have 45,000 tons at present, but each year, we add about 5,400 tons to the pile, so we have to process for several years, and the division has budgeted $300,000 in the current fiscal year to process the inert material. We'll do the 2,000, or 22,500 tons in this current fiscal year, followed by 22,500 the following year. Again, as we move along through time, we are bringing in more inert material, so hopefully we'll catch up to ourselves, and then we can do an annual process thereafter. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Go ahead, Jean.
Yeah, Jean.
Thanks, Mayor. Stephanie, I asked earlier about the fact that we're, the contract is for two years, but we're budgeting for a full five-year period in this fiscal year, or we budgeted for five years in this fiscal year, and it seems to me that we've overbudgeted. We only need to spend, or anticipate spending during the term of this contract approximately $200,000. Could you explain why we are, why we're committing for a five-year when we have a two-year contract with three optional renewals?
Yeah, let me just comment that by approving a contract for the two years and then the option for three additional, for a total of five years, the council is effectively authorizing the creation of appropriation authority in each of the subsequent fiscal years. So if for some reason, you know, the contractor does not complete the contract, we haven't expended that amount, we are not budgeting in fiscal year, you know, the entire amount. It is subject to, like all city contracts, the appropriation and budgeting and actual expenditure in future fiscal years. So we're not really tying up $300,000 and putting it over to the side. We are creating the authority to expend up to $300,000 over five years. There is a distinction there.
Okay, well, what threw me off was a statement in the staff report that says the Solid Waste Division has $300,000 budgeted in FY '15.
Well, the council adopts an annual budget. There is a capital improvement program, and, you know, there are budgets which extend beyond the one year, so for multi-year contracts, we would show a breakdown of, you know, whatever it is, 90,000, the first year, 90,000, the second year, and so forth, but the council only adopts a budget for each fiscal year.
So how much have we actually budgeted for FY '15?
You've budgeted the expenditure of whatever it is, the 90-something thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yeah, that's in their, that's in their operating budget. Let me, let me give, try to give one last try at this thing, and that is that when the council adopts the capital improvement program, many projects extend over various fiscal years, and so you'll see six years of numbers for six fiscal years, but you only adopt the budget, the money, the appropriation, the expenditure authority, basically, for the first fiscal year. You may sign a contract which enables work in subsequent fiscal years, but the expense is only in the first fiscal year. Then the second fiscal year, you adopt another budget for years two and three, and the third fiscal year, and so forth.
Well, that certainly makes sense. My, see, my concern was if we had actually budgeted $300,000 this year, we've had to raise taxes in order to meet that budget, and there was a lot of concern by some council members that we are raising taxes. So what you're telling me is that we've only budgeted, actually, $98,000.
For, for the operations budget, and of course, the interesting thing about this particular contract is it's not only expenditure, it's revenue, and it's revenue positive.
Right.
Charlie.
And Mayor and council, also, this is in the Solid Waste Fund, it's a user-fee-based enterprise fund.
Mayor, thank you, and Stephanie, just my quick comment here. Much like the change that we did to how we handle recycling, I think this is a positive thing. It's definitely looking at ways to remove costs for the city into the future, and the fact that it's revenue positive is a good thing, and it's going to produce a product that we can use, so thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just thought of something while we were talking here, and if I got this straight, we got a contract for two years.
Yes, Mayor Protam.
We've budgeted an expenditure for one year. We've planned the authority to spend for five years. If we're not happy with what was done the first year, can we change the contractor somewhere between year two and year four?
Mayor Protam, yes, because the initial term's going to be for two years, and we would not extend the contract for year three, four, and five if the vendor wasn't performing, and also if the performance by the vendor in the first year isn't adequate, we can always move to terminate the contract based on performance.
Thank you. I hope that helps clarify why we do it the way we do it.
Anyone else? Comments from the public? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, move to award the bid and contract for inert debris processing services to Abusing Corporation in an amount not to exceed $300,000, city contract number 2015-032.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, vote please.
Passes 6 to 0.
Okay. Charlie, we're running on schedule enough to get us to where you need to be on, okay?
I think so, Mayor.
Okay. Item G.
Item 2D, or 2G, adoption of ordinance number 4897-1435, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, granting a utility easement to Arizona Public Service, APS, at Heritage Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In late spring of 2014, Arizona Public Service identified a faulted underground cable within Heritage Park that serves Heritage Park as well as the residential area behind it. The new underground, a new underground cable was installed to the north of the faulted location. In order for APS to complete the relocation project, a utility easement from the city for the relocated electrical line is necessary. Following council discussion on August 12th of 2014, the attached utility easement has been modified to specify that this is for, only for an underground utility. There is no financial impact to this, it is a nominal cost of $1. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
No questions? Comments from the public? Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt ordinance number 4897-1435.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Item 2H, approval to submit a grant application to the Arizona Governor's Office for children, youth and families, children, youth, and families through the Stop Violence Against Women Formula Grant Program in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for a three-year victim advocate position.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Your police department is recommending approval to submit for a grant opportunity through the Governor's Office of Children, Youth, and Families. We're requesting to submit a $250,000 for a three-year period to fund a victim advocate. You know, in 2013, the police department responded to over 500 incidences of domestic violence. Many of those are repeat offenders, or the addresses we go to are repetitive, and this victim advocate would actually work as an intervention tool to prevent future cases of those calls for services. The financial impact to the city would be a 25% match, which can be made through in-kind funding for equipment, you know, office space, that type of a thing, and 25% really amounts to about $20,833 per year. So with that, I request for approval to submit for this funding.
Charlie.
Deputy Chief, just a quick question. Is this going to be a sworn position or a civilian position?
It would be civilianized.
And just a thank you for going out for funds like this. It's a valuable product, project, and if we can get it, great.
I appreciate that, and, you know, if you recall, back in February, we actually submitted for another grant funding opportunity through the Department of Justice, and those are normally awarded in August or September to become effective in October, and we have yet to hear word from them, and so with that being said, we're just looking for this other opportunity to, you know, fund that particular position, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Chief, if and when we hire this, this individual, will they know that this is, this could very well just be a three-year position? Well, that is correct, yeah, we will make that known. Okay. Thank you.
And I just had one, one question. Are these guys going to work hand in, is this person going to work hand-in-hand with TIP? Because it kind of looks like the missions might overlap a little bit.
Well, that is correct, and I'm glad you brought that up. This, this position would actually work with other organizations such as TIP, West, Yavapai Family.
Guidance Clinic.
Guidance Clinic, thank you, and, and closely with our detectives as well.
Thanks.
Jim.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Thanks for bringing this forward. As community evolves, a lot of different things change, demographics change, and this gives us an opportunity at a fraction of the cost to evaluate the need in Prescott for a permanent advocate of this nature, so thank you.
Mayor Protam, thank you.
Andy, this is not one that we have to continue then at the end of three years.
That's correct.
If that's a position that we're, it's mandatory, we continue this position at the end of three years.
That is correct. As some opportunities present, you are aware that, you know, sometimes we're obligated to keep a position. This is not one of those, so we can terminate that, but I'll tell you that this stop grant, oftentimes, they will also renew their and continue their contracts as well.
Okay, so you're comfortable with the funding on it?
That is correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, motion.
Mayor, I'd like to approve to submit a grant application to the Arizona Governor's Office for Children, Youth, and Families through Stop Violence Against Women Formula Grant Program in the amount not to exceed $250,000 in a three-year victim advocate position.
Second.
Motion made seconded, vote.
Item 2I, approval of the acceptance of grant awards from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety in the total amount of $35,000 for traffic education and enforcement.
Mayor, council members, as you recall, back in February, you'd also approved for the police department to submit for a grant opportunity through the Governor's Office of Highway Safety in the amount of $35,000. $25,000 of that would be used for DUI enforcement, as well as education, and speed and aggressive driving in the amount of $10,000, and again, that's for a total of $35,000, which they have since awarded us. There is no other financial obligation to the city for this acceptance of the grant.
Mayor, if I might also comment, you and I had a conversation about this, and you asked where the money came from. Where did this money come from that the Governor's Office of Highway Safety disperses? And it is funded by federal appropriations, actually. Those federal appropriations flow down to the state under MAP 21, Section 402, State and Community Highway Safety Grant Programs made available through the Governor's Office, so this is actually federal money.
Any more questions, council? Comments, public? Motion?
Even though I'd like to take speed out of this whole equation, I will move to approve grant award from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety in the total amount of $35,000 for traffic enforcement and education.
Second.
Motion made seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously. Passes unanimously.
Item J.
Item 2J, approval to purchase sodium chloride for the airport water reclamation facility from Saltworks of Mesa, Arizona, in an amount not to exceed $43,621.47, utilizing City of Chandler contract number MU4-885-3350 pricing, City of Prescott contract number 2015-029.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, John.
The newly constructed and operational airport water reclamation facility is required to disinfect the effluent prior to leaving the treatment process. It's a requirement under our permit, and it's no different at our facility than any other facility across the state and nation. There are many different methods to disinfect, and through the design process, city staff along with our consultant evaluated those different disinfection methodologies or methods and went through a rigorous selection process to determine which process is going to be most cost-effective, most safe, provides the most operational flexibility, et cetera. And the method that was chosen was an onsite sodium hypochlorite generation system. Essentially, what happens is a truckload of sodium chloride arrives, that's table salt. It is mixed into solution to a brine, an electrical charge is put to that brine, and it produces a sodium hypochlorite, which is a disinfectant. So that is the process for disinfecting at the airport water reclamation facility. So in order to do that, salt is required. So this contract that's being brought to you today and recommended for approval is to purchase salt. We are using a cooperative use of contract clause that's contained within the City of Chandler procurement process. This procurement process saves the city a lot of time, a lot of money, and we also get the economy a scale by using a contract from a much larger municipality. With that, I'll take any questions.
Sue.
I must say, I saw that process in action out there, and I was very impressed with the amount of money the city pays by doing that onsite. Also know, once it's done, it's rather, I guess hazardous, you could say?
I would, no. I would say this is, you know, one of the, we looked at all the different methodologies, and one of the factors that we considered was safety. The way we're doing it now with chlorine gas, the employees have to handle the chlorine gas, one-ton cylinders, these one-ton cylinders are out on the road, driving up and down the highway, so we're taking that out of play now. And what we're doing with the sodium hypochlorite, it's a very dilute solution. It's not going to cause much harm to our employees if it gets on them, other than possibly staining their jeans.
What about harm, salt buildup to possibly the aquifer, once it's recharged? Does that get filtered out?
The salt is not, you know, an electrical charge is put to that brine and converts it into sodium hypochlorite. So it's not my understanding that we have a problem with adding salinity to the ground or salt to the ground.
Okay, okay.
And we're actually, I want to add one more point. This product is being manufactured down in the city of Glendale, where they actually have wells down to 13,000 feet. They're extracting the salt up out of the ground there and taking it out of the environment, just as you spoke. So they're taking it out of the environment, and we're using it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dan, you hadn't said a word all day.
(laughing).
No comment. Okay. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the purchase of sodium chloride from Saltworks of Mesa, Arizona, in the amount not to exceed $43,621.47, utilizing City of Chandler's contract pricing, City of Prescott contract number 2015-029.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Made in seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item K.
Item 2K, approval of three agreements with Arizona Public Service Company for maintenance, city contract number 2015-037, poll use, city contract number 2015-038, and energy, city contract number 2015-036, for the city's street lighting system.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is for the approval of three agreements with Arizona Public Service, which provides for the operation, maintenance, and supply of energy for the city-owned streetlight system. These new agreements will replace an existing agreement that has been in place since 1992. APS is updating all its various contracts with municipalities throughout the state, including Prescott, to better represent current maintenance and replacement costs. The monthly maintenance cost is proposed to increase from the current $1.50 per light to $2.35 per light, an annual increase of $16,800 approximately. And this is the first cost increase in 22 years. Additionally, the agreements provide for adjustments in the preset unit costs for streetlight equipment and special work that we may request. Staff has reviewed these costs and found them to be appropriate. Adoption of the contracts will result in an increase in the transportation services budget to cover these increases, and funding in fiscal year 15 is sufficient to cover the costs, and they are covered out of the 75 cents included in the utility bill, the streetlight fee that's charged to every utility customer. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, thank you. Ian, thanks for sticking around on this one. Just a couple of questions to clarify. The one that I was specifically looking at is the streetlight maintenance agreement, Section 4.3.2. This is the change in the price for the monthly charge for maintenance, going to the 2.35 for the initial one-year period. The concern that I have, and just in reading this, is some of these opportunities for APS, the change in prices, have to be mutually agreed upon by both parties. In this situation, upon the effective date, these will be billed monthly. APS reserves the right to review the charges annually, and she'll give the city 180-day written notice in the event of any increase or decrease for normal maintenance. And trying to tie that back into further into the contract, I don't see an opportunity for us to, specifically with this fee, which is for every single one of these things that they're maintaining, to challenge that. If it's a fee for a replacement, or adding a part, or changing something, we have to mutually agree to that every single year that they change it. Here, all it says is they have to give us 180-day written notice.
Yeah, I have that open, and I do, I'm familiar with that clause. Specifically, I would say that we don't anticipate that that clause will be used frequently. However, I would remind you that these contracts are at-will contracts, and at any time if the parties are not, either party does not agree with this contract, we can cancel the contract. And I'm not saying that that's the solution, but there's nothing that locks us into an increase that they would propose. So what I would say is that 180-day time period would be used for us to negotiate the cost increases and agree or disagree and come to some agreement. And so, while it does say that, and that, yes, they can do that, if we don't like the results of that, we're not locked into paying that, and we can cancel the contract and then renegotiate and effectively start a new contract.
And, I mean, obviously, APS is a, you know, major part of our city. We work with them on a lot of different things. They've done a lot for us. My biggest concern is that they have the ability, basically with a written notice, to come back and say, oh, we're going to bump it up to $10 per light per month. And, you know, what are our options as a city outside of APS to maintain our streetlight system?
It's a valid point.
Jane.
The interest clause kind of caught my attention, 18% interest if we're late on our bills. So a question for Mr. Woodfill, are we pretty good about paying our bills on time?
Yeah, and it's pretty standard. It's the same rate we charge in utilities if you're late with your bill. It's 1.5% per month.
I guess fair is fair.
I'll add on to that, that, you know, we've had, sometimes they'll bill us for things that, like project-related, that may not specifically be an obligation of the city. And we have a good relationship. It's not like a standard utility customer relationship, where we do not get billed these large charges on our streetlight billing, especially when we dispute charges or it goes beyond, you know, a year, for instance. We had some charges they were trying to bill on us. We don't typically ever pay any of these fees, but it's in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, clarification, please. At the beginning of your presentation, you said that the cost is covered in the 75-cent a month charge that we send out to the ratepayers. It almost sounds to me as though it's like a pass-through, and I didn't quite catch from you, is that 75% going to go up to 63%? Is it going to reflect that increased charge?
Yeah, let me clarify. I was referring to the 75-cent fee that's charged for every utility user. So that's bringing in, generating a certain amount of money per year. And currently, in fiscal year 15, the total that we bring in is anticipated to cover the existing energy, poll use, and operation and maintenance, including these cost increases.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that for the public, so they understood. That's number one. And if indeed the price was going to go up, they need to understand it's not the city council raising the price, it's APS saying, we got to cover the cost of taking care of streetlights in the city of Prescott. So, thank you.
Following your line of thought, Charlie, if we're going to question this, and we've got 180 days to do it, shouldn't we be doing that before we sign the agreement?
Well, maybe I can address that. Under the agreement for streetlight maintenance, APS charges $2.35 per light for the first year. And anytime after that, APS can determine, after 12 months, it can determine that it's going to raise that, or decrease that rate. But before that goes into effect, there's basically six months, within which time we have the option, the city has the option of reviewing whether that rate is acceptable or going out and finding, say, a private contractor to do the streetlight maintenance. If, depending on the cost, you know, whether 2.35, or let's say they want to raise it to 2.75, is there a private entity or something that will do that within that market price? So that six months allows us for that option.
It also appears that because they've separated the contracts into energy, poll use, and operation and maintenance, you could, you know, review that in the six months prior and cancel that portion of the contract and still ensure that we get energy service. You know, and we could take it in-house, we could contract out. So it actually gives us more flexibility than the old agreement, which was one, which contained all three sections of the different, you know, energy, poll, and maintenance.
Charlie, you're still up.
My follow-up comment, just, you know, playing devil's advocate for a second here, is anytime a large organization goes and standardizes all of its contracts, especially when it has to do with rates, it makes it really easy for them into the future to pass on their rate increases without having to go and evaluate 90 different cities and towns, or however many they've got tied in.
Well, Councilman, I guess I should comment, though, that they are regulated by the ACC. So we pay an energy cost which is established by a particular tariff. So there is, although the streetlights, yes, are, contracts are being standardized, it is the ACC which agrees or doesn't agree on the particular tariff which is applied to the energy cost.
Right, and I would agree on the energy cost, but where the sticking point for me is on this maintenance fee of city-owned poles.
And I think Ian has accurately pointed out that these are not city-owned poles. These are APS-owned poles. And so, we are paying to have the streetlights attached to the APS power poles.
But are they not in our right-of-way?
They are in the city right-of-way.
Do we have any option to increase the value of our right-of-way use?
Well, that is a franchise agreement, so when the franchise agreements come up for negotiation, then we can take a position as well.
Then we should make them aware of that.
I'm sure they're aware of that.
At this point in time, that when that time comes, there will be renegotiation.
Well, again, remember that the 2.35 current, under the current agreement, is not automatically going to increase. It just gives APS the option of increase. So it may stay the same, depending on their cost. And I would suspect, and Ian maybe could confirm this, that because APS has a, so there's sort of an economy of scale to this concept, that if they're going to be doing all these streetlights, that they can do it probably rather efficiently versus the city trying to do it, do that maintenance on its own by way of some private contractor. Because if APS is servicing streetlights throughout, say, a crew is servicing throughout the Yavapai County or something, you know, there's going to be a certain economy to it. But, yeah, that's why there is that six-month period where the city could go out and see if there is a more competitive rate, for instance. But the, Craig, the point is, I think that the energy cost is fixed through the Corporation Commission. It's just this maintenance fee per light that now is adjusted in this contract.
And I should clarify, because I think we're getting words mixed. I said poll, but there's 1,502 streetlights subject to the new $2.35 per month fee in the city of Prescott.
Yeah, so, just to clarify that, you know, we currently pay $1.50 for each of those. And so they're increasing from $1.50 for each of the 1,502 lights to $2.35 for each light. So it's an increase of 85 cents. They had an option in their 1992 agreement to review the rate we paid for operation and maintenance each year also. They just never exercised that right. They kept that rate for 22 years. And so now they've come forward, and that's why staff feels that an increase is appropriate. Where, frankly, I was surprised they never came forward sooner, but that was to our benefit.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. It just sounds like you guys have done your homework on this, and I think we have to look at it from the business standpoint and count the pennies, but it would be unfair to not add that we've had a great relationship with APS. They just got done helping us build a ball field, and they also just gave us a bunch of land to have the dog park on. And they have been good friends to the city, and we got to watch the rates and make sure they stay in a decent range, but it would be unfair to not add the good things about that, and it's not completely adversarial on our part.
To my earlier comment, I agree with you, Chris, that they've been a big player with us, and it's been a positive relationship. But, you know, I look at the last contract we approved, where we basically said we will never ask them to do anything with their substation from now until eternity.
Yeah.
So I just question, when, you know, I look at these things, whether or not we're entering into the best option for the city of Prescott.
Anyone else? Public?
I'm going to make you happy. My name's Daniel Mattson. I live over on Merritt Street. I just want to point out, you know, 2.35 per light per month, I don't know how often they have to play with these things. Would I, I challenge you to find anybody who would even come close to that rate. I doubt if you're going to get anybody who would do it for double that rate. Don't play with fire.
My one comment back is that if we get stuck into a situation where they increase this rate on us, then, to Jim's point, there's a high probability that we're going to have to change what we're charging our customers for the streetlight fund. So it may not happen year one, two, or three, but year four, it may be an increase in what we're putting into our utility bills. And there's no protection, other than we can cancel the contract and go with nobody else to fix that problem.
Well, Councilman, my last comment, we do have a bucket truck. We could maintain the streetlights. And so, we do, the city does have options here. We also have the option to sit down with them in good faith. If, on the one hand, they want to get out of the streetlight maintenance business, then I'm sure we're going to learn that in pretty short order. But that does not seem to be the case. I don't really think that we have a problem here, per se, but as you point out, there are implications here that as a matter of business decision in future years, we should certainly pay a lot of attention to, including things like the franchise agreement, which relates to a lot more than streetlights.
It's kind of like single-point sourcing. I don't know where else we would go. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve city contract number 2015-036. Do I do all these at once? And 2015-037. Lastly, 2015-...
these at once? And 2015-037. Lastly, 2015-038.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made seconded. Vote please.
Passed as five to two. Councilman Blair, Councilman Arnold dissenting.
Got the numbers? Okay. Anything further? We should wish Jane have a happy trip. Safe.
I'm going to France.
So, have a happy trip. We're out of here.